We're still here and still engaged, involved, and still trying to help us work through these projects and these issues. A big part of the presentation, really, the way it came about was we gave a presentation to NCPA's commission. The commission is, I think there are 16 different members that are JPA, like Utica, except 16 members spread all over Northern California. The purpose of the presentation was really a re-education and a reintroduction as to how the Norfolk Project came about and why it's so important to CCWD and not just CCWD but to Calvares County. It's really part of the origin story of CCWD. The pursuit of water resources and local control of the water resources and the Stanislaw is a big part of the reason why CCWD was created. And immediately, the founders of CCWD went to work on filing on those water rights for the Norfolk Project that we still benefit from today. You know, CCWD's role in this county is local control, or one of our top priorities is local control of water resources. And you know, that's how and why the Norfolk Project came about. That's why Steve and others at CCWD were willing to put out a lot of resources and a lot of effort to work with UPUD and Angels Camp to take control of the project so it wasn't lost to out-of-county interests, which is what was at stake at the time. So the story, CCWD's story and CCWD's history is really intertwined inextricably with the Norfolk Project, and then that is what led to the creation of Utica. And so we think that's a really, after we gave a presentation to the NCPA Commission, we felt like it was really important to also share that presentation. It's a modified version of that presentation. We focused a little bit more on Utica than we did with NCPA. To our board, though, we gave the presentation in UPUD last week, and we'd like to share it with the city at some point. Because I think one of the key takeaways, if I can speak for Kelly a little bit and myself in going back through the history of it, is just looking at what our agencies achieved, which is pretty remarkable. What Steve and Larry Thompson and Dwayne and others from the city were able to pull off in the 90s in creating Utica, you know, buying that project from PG&E, pulling these agencies together and keeping control of local water resources, really a monumental achievement. And they were only able to do it because they had a shared vision, they trusted each other, and they were able to work well together. So that's another part of what we wanted to share and hopefully use this as sort of a springboard towards fostering even closer relationships among our agencies, because we're going into some really difficult work. Both the Utica projects and CCWD's Hydropower projects, it's going to be, it's going to get harder from here, not easier. And I think it's crucial for us to be on the same page and have, hopefully, a shared vision of what the outcome for those projects is going to be once they're relicensed. I think it's critical, and I think this is actually the time to do it while we still have time to, you know, shape those processes. So appreciate the time you've given me, and hopefully we'll be able to find time in the future to give the whole presentation.
Thank you, Kurt. You're understanding.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Debbie.
And Steve's on home in Rio Vista tonight, so I had to take him back to the Calvares Airport, so we're not going to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Don't get tired.
I just want to say thank you, Michael, in keeping the local control, and you know, water is getting harder in the future, so thank you.
Ted, and I appreciate the fact that we're all trying to work together to create a system that allows to have water in case the three-quarter burns again, and you know, I appreciate the work that you folks are doing there, because it's important to protect our citizens if we do have another catastrophe.
Yeah, absolutely. Great.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you all. Steve, by safe.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I just have one more comment regarding. I talked with Chris O'Flin this morning, and Chris said that a while back, the city interceded the idea of drilling a well as another water source in case of an emergency. And you know, as we go down this road, it'd be good to explore all of our options in case this collaborative doesn't pan out, or we, you know, if it's not cost-effective or whatever, in order to ensure another water source for our city.
Storage and alternative water sources are not bad ideas. Absolutely. Did you agree with you more?
So, I want to say before we move on. So, what's up?
Go ahead.
I got it. So.
He's got notes?
No, well, I kind of got some of it. I have Steve's name from '74 to '69, I guess, and other stuff. So I really would have liked to have seen this presentation through, but my other question is, I believe there is meetings of two-by-twos coming up, and I think it was kind of pitched, and was that going to be part of this conversation tonight or not? Because I don't, I don't know how I feel about them, but I would definitely like to be a part of it and not left out, is what I'm saying. So if those meetings are going to happen, since you're sitting on that Highway 4 corridor, for my, you and myself, if nobody else wants to do it, I want to sit on that. So I'm in the know also.
Let me think that. I mean, that's kind of a bigger conversation, because it's drawing in two elected from Utica, no, from Union, from CCWD, and from here, but not Utica. So Utica partially gets left out.
Oh, I, no, I.
Yeah, and so, and I also feel like the optics of having elected officials in this kind of capacity is a little bit odd. I feel like that, you know, when we're talking, we talked about we're not interested in consolidation, obviously, that to me gives the optics of consolidation, just a little bit. So I'm all for GM's meeting and GM's talking about emergencies and how we cover each other if there's a fire and a plume gets wiped out, and how can we divert water. You know, it's better to plan an emergency plan, not in the middle of an emergency. So I'm all for that. Or supporting each other's key projects through letters of support or grants and things like that. But this meeting has me a little bit odd. Yeah, it's odd. I don't understand.
For me, I'm all about the collaboration, and I feel that we already have a JPA with two members from UPUD and from the city, and then a member at large. So I feel like adding CCWD to come as a guest speaker is often his times, work with Joel. I mean, public comment's not always ideal because you don't have that much time, but I believe that our conversation about water should happen at the water meeting.
Or at Utica.
That Utica water meeting, yeah. So we already have that scheduled, and then we're not risking stepping on Brown Act violations with this going on over here, and it can't be this person, it can't be that person. So I agree with what she said, and I absolutely would think, instead of doing two-by-twos, I would think we should invite at a time that is appropriate these meetings to happen on the Utica's agenda.
That's fine. I don't even care if it's a whole JPA.
A special meeting, yeah.
I don't care if it's a whole JPA meeting.
Or a whole JPA, something like that, but I don't like the optics or the feel of the Brown Act.
So I'm just, I'm throwing out there that I don't want to be left behind on the information, and I want to be in on that.
But from my understanding, if council members are elected, they're just sitting there watching and listening to the conversation. It's not that we're participating in it, so that even makes it more weird to me.
But I don't know if that's, I don't know how those meetings are going. And that's kind of what I hear too. So I don't know. I don't know if members are able to participate, not participate, sit there. I don't know enough about it yet. I just know if there's information being given, somebody should be there, in my opinion, and I would throw my name out there to be that person.
Steve's who the main event, right? He does that.
I have been and will continue their very inspirational meetings. I mean, it's been great for me to get to know our partners in this, you know, in our water effort. It's such a huge deal. So I have been attending the meetings, I will continue to attend meetings. There has been a request for a couple of council members to participate in some way, and so we haven't had one of those meetings yet, so I don't know what that would look like. I don't know if it's council members and the electives from the other agencies sitting in the back and just listening. I don't know if they're engaged in the conversation. We haven't had one, so I can't, I don't, I don't know what that meeting was, is going to be like. I'm pretty confident there is going to be one of those meetings. So it kind of comes down to, at some point, as elected officials, do a couple of you want to attend or do you not? Should it be an official subcommittee of council? Should it, at some point, those decisions will have to make. I had hoped that this might have been an opportunity for some, for some conversation about that.
Right.
Were we being aware of how long it was going to take?
How long it was going to take?
So initially, initially, the communication was it was a 15-minute presentation, and that's what we agendized for tonight, but then as the information came in, I believe today, it was much more time and we didn't have that available on our agenda. So it was, I talked to Mr. Minkler as he got here, and he chose to maybe forego it and do it at another time when he could do the full presentation. He didn't want to break it up and do just the PowerPoint rather than the video, and he chose to speak rather than get cut off.
Go ahead. No, just theories, just so we know for the next, we try to just schedule this. Yeah.
More time, maybe, not so many.
Thanks.
Steve, has conversation happened when you've attended these collaborations with inviting meetings to be had at Utica, at the JPA that's already formed? Where the only people missing from that meeting would be CCW, there's already UPUD involvement, there's already City of Angels involvement, and we have our JPA general manager there as well as a member at large.
Yeah, I don't remember any suggestion that.
Yeah, and that's Jen's suggestion, I'm not, I'm wondering.
Yeah, that the, that the JPA be used as how.
The catalyst, yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember any allegation of that.
It's just confused me why it's, why it's being discussed as a two-by-two meeting but not involving Utica Water Empower. And that's my concern, that's my object.
The way it was explained to me is Utica is involved, because there's at least one member of Utica from Angels and one member of Utica from Union participating in the two-by-twos.
That's not true. Our general manager.
Well, I mean, if you're talking about non-elected, you've got you.
No, what I mean is, so the two-by-two, my understanding is it would be two members of CCWD, two elected members of CCWD, two elected members of Union, one of which is on the Utica board, and then two members of Angels, one of which is on the Utica board. So you have CCWD, you have Angels, and you have Union, and by default, because Angels and Union are both visiting, they have two members from Union.
These are the two that have volunteered to go, neither of them are on the Utica.
With the assumption that the current representatives from the city, the Utica representatives, one of them would be sitting on this board or this committee or whatever we're calling it. That's the assumption.
And like I said, this hasn't happened yet, so I don't know what it would look like. It was a suggestion, and we haven't.
I would suggest back that, I mean, I think if you guys, if the general managers want to continue, which I think is really important, and I think it's really good working collaboration, but I feel like if the electives are invited, maybe that's a twice-a-year thing, it's a special call meeting where everybody, like we do with the JPA, and everybody's at the table, and we can all have that discussion or whatever. I feel like that that's a better, where they need to bounce things off of the elected officials. I mean, we are taxed, we have a lot of meetings, so that's the ethic, that's the last piece of it, but I just feel like this is, this is more general manager work other than elected work, so.
That's my secret.
Or do the, have, you have to call a special meeting and invite two members of CCWD to participate.
Yeah, I agree. I've asked on at least three occasions for more information as to the behind-the-scenes why of this two-by-two, and I've gotten probably maybe two or three different answers, but neither one has been that aha moment that says, oh, now I get it, now I understand the why. The most recent was, oh, the electives need to be there to monitor or witness what the general managers are doing. And I'm like, that's not my job to do, that's not an elective's job to do. So I just am not, I'm not comfortable with that. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Ross. So what are we on? We're on B. We are on the Utica Park.
Did you ask the public or you?
Do, did not. Public comment. Sorry, Amy. Last chance, public comment, anybody on this?
Does it in public?
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, Utica Park Lightner Mine Expansion Project, subject D.
There are council members, it's good to see you hide out there. Basically, the playground's getting very, very close. They've been putting the rubber on top of the asphalt. Soon as you see it turn blue, you'll know that they're almost done with it.
The rubber meets the road.
Yes, then you'll know it's done.
But we finished product?
They've finished product. Yeah. So basically, I've had, so on the 23rd, we have a playground inspector who's going to go out there. He's been scheduled pretty well to the 23rd, and then once that happens, we'll look at how many people try it out. There's been a couple of questions about shade and safety. That QB-looking thing, they're actually relatively popular. There's a lot of them in Northern California, there's a huge number of them throughout Arizona. They've all, everybody I have called says they love them, they have not had any safety problems with them. And basically, there's something interesting about it. You always have to have three points of contact in order to actually use it, and if you get up high enough, this thing actually goes to 18 feet. You can only drop six feet before you hit rope, stop your haul. Given the, and plus, we have the safety cushion down below. As far as heat goes, because it's got minimal surface area and it's mostly rope, heat is not usually a concern about people burning themselves. I will say that at 5:15, I went by there, and bless that one cedar tree, it had 100% shade on the area. So yay. We did ask about the shade structure for that to see what might happen. It has to be a minimum of seven feet above the top point. They can't make it ASTM, the ASTM standards with it being that tall, but they could, of course, do little minimal shade structures around. The committee did not look at, did not want to go and spend their money on shade structures. They wanted to invest in play equipment. If one wanted to go in later and add shade structures, fine, but they wanted to make sure that the primary investment at this time was that. If additional money had been spent, it would have been on expanding the river ice area.
And there's trees going in.
And there's trees going in, okay, yeah. And so we've actually met and talked about some of the landscaping, and the first place we talked about was putting them on the other side so that in the morning, they would cast a shadow, and then we already have the shadow being cast in the afternoon, so I think we might be better than we suspect we might be. Bathrooms are done. I believe you have the key?
I do.
Anybody use the restroom?
I'll say it's Steve.
There you go, Steve. We have checked about water fountains this afternoon, or at least on a list, to see if we might be able to get a hydration station. Steve, did you want to talk about the EV stations now or wait till you're?
I have.
That's an agenda item.
Yeah, so as far as park is concerned, we may be able to address that also. Thursday, there will be lots and lots and lots and lots of cement trucks going in. All the dirt you see right now, that goes out to where the hard cores will be, and then it goes down into the pit, and that's where the last 50-by-50 foot slab is going to cover the old lightner mine, and they'll be pouring that on Thursday.
So Amy, there's a heat advisory coming in right now for the next, yeah, tomorrow, Thursday. So are they going to come if that's a heat advisory day?
They told us this morning at 8:00 AM that they were planning on Thursday, and when I went by there after closed session, there were people scouting the area that said concrete on the side, so it looks to me like it's on. Yeah, I know that the rumor, they actually like hot, because it sets up real quick.
On the rubber.
That there's always a possibility that it might cause some delays. On Thursday, since we went on four.
Good.
It'll set up. How they can start at seven. Six, yeah. That's basically what I have on the playground at this time, unless there are any questions.
The pad looks amazing. I've updated it.
Oh, yeah, I think it started, I mean, that looks really, and I see the work coming off of the side that they're. Fence is in. My favorite part is now and always will be the frog.
The frog. So the frog looks so much like the frog that used to be a frog. And it's not. I had, Todd Hallendorf actually said, I was wondering if that was the same frog. I'm like, no, he's on the Bible. But it looked, and I guess you guys had a hard time finding a frog like him and not like tree frog-looking frog.
Couldn't find one. It was custom made for us.
Was it?
From a photograph.
Right, a frog.
Yeah. They only made tree frogs, and we said, yeah, it's not going to work.
We're good.
Go ahead, go ahead, you first.
The old concrete pad that's under the trees.
Yes.
Did we ever, are we going to resurface that, or does that have to come up? Or, I mean, are we going to, I forget, where do we end up on that one?
So that was sort of on our wish list. It's looking like there may be budget that we can look at doing a, grinding it down and making it smooth and giving it a different looking surface the most economical way. So.
Like a paint, that's a treatment or something?
It's, what did they call it?
See, that was not part of the thing.
Yeah.
Jackhammer it out, pour it new, right? It was part of it. And we said, no, let's see if we can, you know, skin coat it with something or grind it down or make it look.
We met out there, they basically said that the most economical way to do it was to make it smooth, so it doesn't have that, and make it grind it down, and then you expose the aggregates that's.
Yeah, expose the aggregate, yeah.
Then it's on a stick.
And there's a name for it, and I can't come up.
I can, they had a name for it, but they said that that, given the situation and the old trees that are around the area and the desire to keep as many trees as possible, and not disturb by tearing up the concrete, the suggestion was that we go through this process of grinding it down to make it smooth. It exposes some of the natural elements in the existing concrete, and then putting some type of.
A sealant.
A sealant over the top of it to preserve the look of what they're able to uncover when they're running it down.
Just make sure that the grinding equipment is not too heavy. I'm sure there's a weight restriction.
Oh, and if not, we'll see how well.
Small grinder.
And then last one that I have a question, is the pit down there, where they're going to pour all the concrete, I guess we call it pit. How is that draining out? Is that part of the drainage that we built it on the other night? How is, how's water getting out of that hole down there?
So the consensus is that it's draining now and will continue to drain.
Okay.
Because.
It's just draining through the gap.
Because of all the spaghetti of tunnels and holes, and if you've seen when they cut that bank back for the state, you can see what kind of material we're talking about.
Right.
So the consensus is it's supposed to.
So I mean, I have a couple of questions. One is, are the trees dependent on people purchasing them, or we're going to plant and then see if people want to purchase a tree for a loved one or a family member?
The second, we have 15 that are being donated, we have some budget for some.
Trees.
So they'll, all of the trees, so the remainers will have to be waiting. So they'll, all of the trees, so the remainers will have to be waited to be, will have to wait to, wait for donations in order to plant again?
Not, the first 15 is being given to us by pitching the 15 gallon, five and 15 gallon ones. So those we get.
And are those going to be situated around the new playground equipment?
Some of them will, yes. Ones that will grow tall, mainly evergreens we're talking about, fast growing.
And then the 50 by 50 slab, did we plug that hole first and then we work?
Now, this is one of those where we're doing the rebar in the thing so that there's ever catastrophic collapse.
Also, the rebar extends through the opening?
No, it's in the concrete. So that if there's ever a catastrophic failure, it'll go like that and not suddenly open up and swallow everything.
So, so the rebar is covering the existing hole then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It extends over the hole?
You'll have time to run off.
Our, as our best information tells us, it's covering.
And then just, just a follow up to Alvin's question. You said when you looked at that, the cut for the new theater, they're going to have the CNU all. And we talked a couple of meetings ago about whether or not we need to put a French drain. Are we going to have any water reaching out of that bank that we need to collect and divert away from the stage?
The final plans are actually coming in later this week on that. And our engineers will be, our engineer and our building inspector will be looking at that to see if they're satisfied with the way the drainage will be handled. I know they are incorporating drainage structures into it, but not a French drain.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
I just want to go back to the shade. There is no shade being, being provided other than the trees. Cause I attended one of the meetings and there was discussion about what the product of the shade was going to be, whether it was like a fabric shade or whatever. And I did think we were getting some shade for the play area.
No.
It must have gotten taken off or financially.
Financially, it was, it was a give and take financially. And they decided they wanted to invest more in the equipment and not.
Shade structures.
And so we can't really plant those trees until fall because of the heat, right? When, when would we be planting the, start of the trees?
It would be when it starts raining is when we would want to do that.
The irrigation will be downed everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, we're looking, we're finishing up the irrigation plan. Where the trees exactly, exactly are going to go. The variety of the trees, that's coming in right now also.
Okay. Public comment. Does anybody have anything to say about Utica Park?
Who's going to hear me? You just sit down here.
Seeing anybody public and nobody's with us online. All right, any kind of questions or comments, anybody up here? Thank you much. We're going to move on to item C. This is authorized staff to pursue formula allocation, permanent local housing allocation, TLHA funds. Amy.
Mayor and council members, this funding has been around for a long time. The city has never taken advantage of it. So right now, the city has just short of $300,000 that the state will give us should we put together an application and submit it to the state. We have been approached both by Sierra Hope and Habitat for Humanity to at least make these funds available. There is no project currently where there's an application. This is not about any specific application. This is just about that menu of items that you see there, 1 through 8, that could conceivably qualify for this. Anybody who might want to pursue some of this money would have to apply, go through a process to be selected and meet one of these eight objectives. Things like accessibility for houses, upgrading houses for accessibility, down payment assistance for homeownership, accessory dwelling units, all sorts of things, rental assistance, supportive case management services, a wide variety of housing and housing support service weeks. So basically, we've already not received $127,000 that we can't get because we shouldn't have pursued this. But it is something that a lot of jurisdictions do pursue. The money is always there. You simply have to claim it and make it available. And we'd happy to answer your questions.
So.
Go ahead.
Okay. So if we agree to this, the eligibility is based on those eight criteria. And they submit a grant. And if it meets one of those eight criteria, then dollars are allocated, correct?
That is.
It doesn't, it doesn't come back to the council for final approval.
If you would like this council to have final say, you can ask that that be made part of the program. Generally, these types of applications would be at the planning commission level. And in fact, they even require review.
Okay.
And there are some things on this list that are permitted uses under state law and artist zoning code that would not tend to come.
Well.
However, because they may be using money that we're allocating, the question of whether or not to allocate that specific dollar to that specific project could come to you, not the project necessarily, but whether or not that project should get dollars that you have control of.
Is the allocation based on a certain criteria or is it just first come, first served? Do we, how does, how does the allocation work?
It's whatever we decide.
Decide.
It has to do with the goals we set for ourselves.
Okay.
And right now, the one goal that we are trying to pursue is our general plan goal, which says that we will pursue state federal funding sources to assist in the development of housing for extremely low, very low, low and moderate income.
Housing.
That's, that's perfect. That was one of my questions. How does this play into our housing development so that it does meet some of the, it's straight out?
It is straight out of our housing element. That is an implementation program. We have a goal that follows that same thing, but no, it's straight out of our housing element, our adopted certified housing element.
And then Amy, did I read somewhere or was, maybe it was another agenda item? Oh, it's right here. City may use up to 5% of the allocation for administration. So is there staff time involved in making sure that the dollars that we allocate are being used in the way that we, they should be used? Or how does that, where's the checks and balances?
Normally, what one does with these is one has the applicant sign an agreement that spells out how they are going to be spending the money. And often you need to have something like a covenant recorded on the property to show that that property will maintain itself as affordable for so many years.
So Amy, I have a question. What's the reason that we've never pursued this in the past, the 127? Is it kind of because it's a program? We have to develop a program to how we want to receive this money and how we want to hand it out? And what's our criteria and who manages it? Is it that?
Obviously, don't know. It's been around for quite some time. And we were actually approached by Sierra Hope and Habitat for Humanity. And somebody from the county told us about this fund. And we looked into it and went, yeah, why aren't we pursuing this money? Couldn't give you a good reason?
Go ahead.
So is this a grant? Is there, is there a match to it or?
No, it's a formula allocation. This money has already been set aside.
So it's just an allocation, there's no match, there's no.
No.
Okay.
No, you give them an application, give you the money. There's reporting requirements.
Okay.
As with any allocation.
Are there other requirements that are tied to receiving this money?
Other than reports?
Hypothetically, do we, we have to spend it every year? We can't, is there, I don't know, it's like.
We have to maintain a certified housing element, which we have. We have to keep filing our annual reports, which we do.
Okay.
And it has to be one of those eight items that we're using the money for. And there is a period of time in which you're supposed to, you have like, it's called a five year plan. You're supposed to spend the money within five years.
Oh, okay.
And then the next time the allocation comes up, you claim it.
Start over again.
Is this money available for 2023 and for 2024? Do we know yet for 2024?
So this is all the money we have left in the five year cycle.
Okay, gotcha. And there's no need five year cycle starting?
Not yet.
Okay.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
And I can't remember what it's called. I know a while back when we got the fire truck that had the.
CBD chief.
Right, but we got kicked into a different, we had to have, we had to go out and have to do a different type of audits because we got bumped into a different, was it the GANs or, or no? What, did we hit some limit?
We spend $750,000 or more in federal dollars. We have to have a single audit. We've had a single audit the last two years.
I just wanted, does this kick us into any sort of different bracket where we have to pay for a different type of auditor or anything else? I'm just.
It's an additional charge. It's about $7,000 more you have to pay for the audit to have.
That's a sale.
If we get 5%, it's $10,000 bucks.
They, these are state funds, so I don't know.
It's not a federal. Okay, I didn't, I'm just checking to see if there's any thing we would have to do above and beyond by.
Okay, I have a public comment on this. Anybody has a public comment?
I'll go first.
Good evening, council members. This one?
Uh, no.
It's not.
Let's have it on. I'll talk loud.
There you go.
It would be amazing if the City of Angels Camp had a nearly $50 million affordable housing project ready to go that this money could go into, which we do, by the way. And I was told it's kind of frowned upon to bring champagne into a session like this. So I'm thrilled to say that we are moving during this month. And so we're very excited about that. Speaking to what Amy just shared, this funding is so critical on a broad scale of addressing affordable housing for this, for this county and for the City of Angels. And I can say as a hopeful recipient of part of that fund that it would go a long way in the scope of this project. It's a braided approach of funding. It wouldn't fully encapsulate our full project, obviously. But it would be incredibly helpful for a lot of the outstanding numbers that we still are trying to bring in and collect. So we appreciate your consideration in this, especially because we'd love to see the city as a continued partner for this big development that's happening. So, and by the way, in case I haven't said this in a previous session, this development that we're having in Angels Camp is the largest Habitat project in California's history.
Wow.
So for little Calaveras to have this is pretty amazing. So anyway, thank you guys.
Hi, Jerry Kadat from Sierra Hope. I'm excited about Habitat's project as going to be a great addition to the community. Sierra Hope, we serve a little different population. And what I'm concerned about in our programs is affordable housing for the very low income folks in our community, particularly rental housing. Before coming over here, I checked to see what rentals are listed, currently listed and available in Angels Camp at Calaveras County. There's one apartment listed as currently for rent at Angels Camp for 1550 dollars. And then including that one in all of Calaveras County, there are three rentals currently listed as available. At Sierra Hope, one of the things that we do is we have a HUD grant to provide assistance for people who are unhoused to get into permanent housing and become stably housed by providing case management, financial assistance for deposits and for rent subsidies. Last year, we weren't able to spend all of that grant, not because we didn't have people who needed help, but because there wasn't enough rental units available to place them in. We have many more people coming, looking for help getting into housing and they just can't find it. And this is a crisis all over, not just Calaveras County or Angels Camp, but all over California and all of the United States and maybe the world. We are in a housing crisis. But we've also seen a lot of, well, what I've seen a lot of this past year in people coming to us are people who have been in a rental unit for maybe several years. And the landlord has decided to sell the property home and get out of the landlord business. Or they have decided to convert to the more lucrative short term vacation routes. A lot of the people that we, that come to us are seniors, disabled population. And I know oftentimes people have an image of people who are homeless in their community. They, they see the people who draw attention. And they don't see the folks that I see. You know, the woman in her 70s living in her car, single mothers with children living in a vehicle or an tent for counter surfing with their friends, moving from place to place. So I really would like to encourage the City of Angels to not pass up this opportunity to apply for this funding. It's free money for you guys. And the city has an opportunity, I think a responsibility to help the least of their citizens. And we would like to be a partner in that. And we also want to support Habitat's project because we know that folks that get into a Habitat house may free up some other rental properties. And some of the folks that we serve maybe could eventually graduate to a Habitat house. But a lot of the people we serve will never be able to do that because, you know, if you got, if you're on disability or you're a senior citizen and you're trying to eke out a living on $1,100 a month, even, even this one rental that's listed in Angels Camp for, you know, $1,500, it's, you know, how are you going to get into it? So I hope that you guys will act and say, yes, please, let's have some money.
Thank you. Thank you. Any with public comment? Saying you're online? No. Okay, we'll bring you back to council.
I have a question. So this is maybe a word of gratification. I realize that maybe others, 80,000 sort of categories that we could call interventions and likely in what we're asking for. But my question is, so if we identify and say it's line two, and it just opens us up to the remaining, the remaining categories that are left, really, six, the German is something that we would hope to.
And.
So can you, so can you just pick one and two and not three through eight?
Right, does that sort of disclude those? It is my concern here is that, and what I just want to be very clear about is if we are doing one and two, that we're not opening ourselves up to then have to be responsible for funding, you know, number five.
So basically, when you write your five year plan, you say what your top priorities are? And if your top priorities are one, two, you make that clear. And then when you evaluate applications, the ones that will come out highest will be pursuant to verse one and two.
So touching on that, you envisioned this, this is all happening at the, at the planning level with the, with the planning commission and going through applications or in a subcommittee? I guess I'm more concerned about the.
Process.
Well, the plan, we were absent having a plan. So we have to develop a plan, put it together, be responsible for the plan, set forth with our, our plan, fund our plan and then worry about what we can't fund. So it's a heavy lift. It's, it's a wonderful problem to have $298,000 to give to everybody. But it's an obligation to be caught with not having the plan and carrying it out correctly. And I, I'm a little concerned about that.
No, but we have a plan. We have the eight criteria at which those dollars can be allocated.
Kind of like what Isabel just said.
But once those dollars are allocated, they're allocated.
So do we give $50 to every applicant? Or do we give a whole $298 to the first guy out the door? I mean, those are my concerns.
So that is in preparing the plans, that's what we will outline. And then it has to go to a public hearing, which we, and you also have to approve that five year plan before we then go out and start accepting applications. So this is the, yeah, go ahead and do that step. And then we come back to you with a five year plan and then we will handle for applications. So you will see all of that. I was wondering, okay, so it's going to be a heavy lift to do a five year plan? I pulled it up today and it's three paragraphs.
Okay.
So I like those kind of plans, especially when they give you the criteria.
Okay, but then once we have the, and then the plan, then we, then the planning department, they are holding this container of who the applicants are, like who they're vetting the applicants and deciding where the money's going.
So we will specify that in the plan.
So we're going to talk to our partners out there, talk to our neighbors.
How do we want to do the selection process? When I mentioned the planning commission, it's because if there's an application for a specific project, which we're not looking at today, it usually goes to the planning commission when it's not permitted use. Do we want to use them as somebody to look at this over? Hmm, maybe a planning commissioner, maybe a city council member, maybe a member of a certain organization, blah, blah, blah. Just like we. a certain organization, blah, 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 um, just like we probably would be setting up if we got that prize grant. You have to choose on applications who would qualify to get their mobile home replaced. We've got a committee all lined out for that too in the grant, we may just follow that model. We've done this in the past for, um, first-time homebuyers, we could follow that model. There's a bunch of models out there we could follow that the city's used in the past, and by all means, if you have a recommendation, we'll incorporate that.
So this is your first phase of just wanting us to give you the direction to move forward with the pursuit of it, and then we have to put the plan, make the plan, our plan.
The next, the next time you would see it would be with a draft plan?
I think we should go after it, I mean.
I do too. So that's a motion.
I'm all, I'm all for it.
I'm all for it, yeah, going after the money, let's, like, but we need to make sure that we've got some things in place along the way.
Right.
And my only concern is your time and staff's time, um, having to, we have a lot of other things happening, and it's, like I said, it's a good problem to have, but, so if we were to pursue this, get the money, and, and I'm just saying hypothetically, if we didn't put the plan together until February, is there penalties or, or something that there's, there's a timeline that we can't adhere to, we can't stick to?
Yeah, if, well, there is in terms of if you don't get a plan adopted and the money allocated, um, another hundred and some odd will go away.
So it's fall.
So if this falls off, it's not using it.
It's falling off as we go forward, like, the one hundred and twenty-seven for twenty-twenty, um.
Drops off.
Calendar yours already dropped off.
Right.
Um, now we want to make sure that we don't also lose the twenty-twenty-one, hundred and twenty-eight, seven sixty-four, um, so we want to make sure we get that done by the end of the year to try.
End of this year, which is just a couple months.
I, um, I think they give you, I'll have to double check, for some reason February stuck in my brain, that you have to have something done by then.
But you, you believe, you clearly can bring this plan back to us so that we can utilize all of our allocation? It's not going to be so arduous where you can't get it done?
No, I think our problem's going to be we won't have nearly enough allocation for the need.
For the NEMUS. I, I, I think it's the step in the right direction for that, in my mind.
Yeah.
You want any?
Any?
Go, Nate. All right. I make the motion that we authorize staff to pursue the state's formula allocation for the City of Angels under the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program, to secure the two hundred and ninety, or the additional one twenty-seven to the whole two ninety-eight, eight, eight, fifty-five.
The whole two ninety-eight.
Or any amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five. We have a motion?
Yeah.
Now then.
I'll second the motion.
Shamante?
Aye.
Rolio?
Aye.
Longkada?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Chara?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And remember the email.
I will not forget, I will all get an email for it.
Okay, thank you.
No, you want to, that's okay. Let's go. I'll, I'll, I'm gonna go out there and.
Excuse me, was it only out there or what?
Okay, now we're gonna move on to item D, this is Resolution twenty-four dash six-six, authorizing an amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Angels and the Pickle Porch Foundation.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Last year in twenty twenty-three, one of the buildings that the city owns, um, the city entered into a lease agreement with Pickle Porch, that was in October of twenty twenty-three. One of the features of that building is a restroom, that's a quasi-public restroom, the way it's being used because it's a city building. There's an agreement, a partnership between the city and the current occupant of the building, Pickle Porch as a business, to make that restroom available, not just for the business itself, but for the public. We have a new business in town, it's called Yummy Haha.
A new business in town.
That, uh, business, Yummy Haha, would like to also have their customers use that restroom at the Pickle Porch, and there's been some discussion back and forth about the best way to make that happen, the Pickle Porch is willing to allow Yummy Haha and their clientele to use that building that they currently lease from the city, and in an effort to do that, we need to amend the existing lease agreement between the city and the Pickle Porch to allow that use by an entity other than Pickle Porch itself. So to allow Yummy Haha and their customers to use the building, it requires an amendment to the existing agreement. So before you tonight is a request to consider an amendment to the existing agreement between the City of Angels and, uh, Pickle Porch for that building downtown. Does that mean I should answer any questions?
And as I understand it.
Looking at the, um, attachment, the, uh, uh, lease agreement.
Mm-hmm.
What are the changes? What are, what, what, what is standing out to me with not having the old one embedded in my brain, there's no, like, red lines?
Um, it's.
Can you tell us what the changes are?
Basically, in recitals, C, recital C.
That's the big change?
That's the big change.
Thank you.
And in all, all we're.
C and D.
We're agreeing to allow the Pickle Porch to keep those restrooms open longer than they have traditionally been kept open.
Yes, the existing agreement says that those restrooms will be open during the normal business hours of the Pickle Porch. This agreement would extend those hours that that restroom is open, not only to let the Pickle Porches open, but also to certain hours that Yummy Haha is also open.
Would Yummy Haha then have the assumed liability, should something happen between Pickle Porch's closed hours and their open hours?
This agreement specifies that the Pickle Porch assumes the liability even when they're closed and Yummy Haha's clientele are using it.
And is the Pickle Porch policee aware if that's okay with all of them?
They are. There was first suggested a three-way agreement, so eliminate the existing agreement between the city and the Pickle Porch and have a, a brand-new lease that includes the city, the Pickle Porch, and Yummy Haha. And after discussion with that, Yummy, Yummy Haha and the Pickle Porch decided Pickle Porch will just assume the liability for it instead of also making Yummy Haha take out a brand-new insurance policy so that they can use the restroom a couple of hours a day, it just transfers to Pickle Porch. So this went through legal review, the resolution and the lease agreement that you see in front of you, um, has been through legal review, it's been circulated to the Pickle Porch, and Pickle Porch, uh, owner agrees with the terms of the agreement.
Says it right there, I think the leasee agrees, clean and maintain the restrooms locked or unlocked the restroom. Having gotten a ton of feedback from some of the businesses downtown who would like to see this open seven days a week, uh, bathroom, so, um, I think it's, I guess, and it's nice that it'll be from seven to seven, and I think it's a win-win for everybody.
And we're gonna be held harmless, I agree.
Yeah.
Severed.
I think it's a win-win, I, I think it's whiskey on Pickle Porch, but that's not my business, I mean, if, if the bathrooms don't get locked one night, or somebody vandalizes it, or something gets damaged in some way, it could be a pointing of fingers, but the city's not getting pointed to in any way, and it's amongst them, so, I mean, it's a win-win for, for us, is my opinion. We don't have any public comment here tonight, but I will open it briefly for an opportunity for a public comment, seeing none, closed public comment, and let you all make final comments or questions, if anybody has any.
I just.
Sorry, I was gonna say the bathrooms are still gonna be closed on Tuesday, and considering they're both closed on Tuesday, I'm just making that public comment.
However, and you're right, but I do know many times, and Gretel will say it, if she's in town and she's down there working.
Correct. I was only saying officially, not that we are, yeah.
Yeah, so we can't go out saying seven days a week just yet, but it does cover a gap, um, I think for the most part.
Scott, they have not presented a, a problem, half-day four-year officers?
No, it's actually gotten a lot better since Pickle Porch has been in them because they were open twenty-four hours, seven days a week, so you can have people sleeping in there, and Gretel, before the, the lease got changed, Gretel calling us because there's people sleeping in the bathroom, and she got to work herself, so they walk in doors, and the vandalism and stuff like that, you know, at night, so, we, we, that's a issue to whatsoever.
So the city will provide another key to the Yummy Haha, or that's between Gretel and him?
It's not between them, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure a bunch of keys, no frigging name.
Yeah, we're not produce, we're not providing any additional keys.
Right.
That's on them.
Yeah, it's on them.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make one comment, um, you know, I think, it's not security, but, um, it's just if another business comes in without a bathroom, what do we do then, or what, you know, I mean, it's, I mean, that's, 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 that's a, that's a lease agreement.
Tuesdays, Tuesdays are a bit.
I know, but then it just starts to get muddy, and who's doing what, and what day was mine, and that's the only thing that concerns me about it, and it's always concerning about those bathrooms, but, that's a moot point, I think it's a good thing, that's another business opening up, I'm happy for it, so.
But it, it has to do with restaurants though, to have, to have a restroom.
Right.
Right? And so where Yummy Haha was, they must have had a restroom, originally.
It's back behind the counter.
Right.
So it has a restroom, but it's, it's not accessible, by understanding, it's, it's not that it's, um, I don't know about that, but because you have to go behind the counter, now you're interfering with health and you.
Oh, I see, so there is a restroom, but it's not.
No, there is one, yeah, there is one out there.
There is one in there, okay.
Contamination, people coming in and walking past food.
Right.
Yep.
Think that was the issue?
Oh, okay.
At least that's what I remember.
Okay. Drop down, sorry.
And you're right, I mean, the only person that could lose in this is the relationship, we could, we could not be satisfied, and if it all comes down to Gretel, it all comes down onto the Pickle Porch, that we're not happy with whatever's happening, or, so we, now we can't, we can't pick or choose, we just simply say no more bathrooms, so it's, it's a, it's a win-win for us.
And that's a, it's another reason why I like this option better.
Rather than the three-way.
Than the three-way, because a three-way might become a four-way, might be, so now it's all, we are leasing it to Pickle Porch, they assume responsibility, if they want to allow another business to use it, we will again amend the agreement with Pickle Porch and they assume the liability.
I mean, it's a wonderful example of downtown collaboration and neighborly businesses supporting each other, I, I couldn't be prouder, so I think it's wonderful.
I have one question, like, negative, negative, okay. If something happens between the two of them, we have to handle it with it? So say Gretel decides she doesn't want open bathrooms anymore for those extended hours, what is our role in that?
Yeah.
And we have a role in it.
I think that.
I don't think that's going to happen, I'm just asking to ask a question.
Yeah, I, um, I've known Gretel for about three weeks now, when I first went down there and met her, but she was great, I mean, she's all in favor of making this available and helping out the other business, it was a great experience. There is a clause in here that if something goes sour, they can end the agreement, they can petition us to amend the agreement again, so if, uh, something doesn't work between Pickle Porch and Yummy Haha, Pickle Porch can approach us, we can then amend the agreement again, and.
Back to the original.
Back to the original or some other version.
I didn't read, but does it follow new owners? So hypothetically, if one sells to Yummy Ahoo instead of Yummy Haha, does, does that agreement, or does it have to get reestablished with new owners?
Uh, I've heard of that, but I think because it specifies the name of the business, Yummy Haha, that is specific to that business and its current operators.
Okay.
Any tips, right?
Anything? Okay, Alan, was it you?
Sure.
I'll make a motion for Resolution twenty-four sixty-six.
Second.
Shamante?
Aye.
Rolio?
Aye.
Longkada?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Chara?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item F, this is to approve Resolution twenty-four dash six-seven, authorizing the city administrator to work with Calaveras Council of Government, COG, to identify and pursue funding sources for electric vehicle charging stations to be installed in City of Angels.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and council members. In my effort to get out and, uh, get to know people and meet people, I ran across Melissa Aragio, and, um, another example, she was great to work with, she offered, uh, she sat, sat down with me for about an hour, hour and a half, and explained many things that I didn't know before, and it was very, very good. One of those things are, is the effort county-wide to transition city and county vehicles to, uh, electric vehicles per a, a mandate that is coming down the road, and there is a timeline by which city vehicles and county vehicles that exceed a certain weight have to transition to electric, and as a part of that, COG has, um, hired a consultant, basically, to assess the current situation in the county, including the City of Angels, and recommend a schedule by which city vehicles and county vehicles should be, uh, transitioned to electric, and along with that, strategic locations based on the consultant's experience and recommendation of where these chargers should go, for the purpose of charging city vehicles. One of those locations is the old Napa Building.
Yeah, that's where we.
That's where one of the EV chargers has been identified by the consultant, um, to best serve the needs of the city. So I asked her, can, since this is a, an effort to transition city and county vehicles, can the public also use these EV chargers? And the answer is absolutely yes, up to the discretion of the city. We can make them pay chargers, we can make them free chargers, but at a point where we do actually install a charger at the, uh, Napa Building, if we do, based on the consultant's recommendation, we can make that available to the public as well. So we got to thinking, uh, Amy and I, we have a little project right next to the old Napa Building called Utica Park, and part of the grant requirements is that we have electric vehicle chargers in the park. So I talked to, um, Melissa at COG about funding opportunities for, um, is there a way that we can get funding for the Napa Charger and the park? And she says, absolutely, that's my job, is to go after these funds for you, work on your behalf, get these grants, so that the city doesn't have to pay for these things that, where there's money otherwise available. What I need from you, she says, is authorization from the city council to have me work with you to go after these funds for you, so that's what this is about. This is a resolution authorizing me to work with, uh, COG to go after grant and other types of funding, so that we can make these electric vehicle chargers available in the park, at Napa, and anywhere else that you would like as the city council.
So, see, my question, um, months ago, the council, uh, designated two spots for EV chargers, one at Napa and one at the police station.
Yeah.
Um, and I appreciate you reaching out to Melissa and finding a funding source to cover the other one.
Yeah.
I did not think about, you know, when the, I guess, I don't know what I was thinking, but when the public uses it, which makes sense for the public to use, who pays that bill? I mean, is there like a coin thing, or you put a card in it? How does that work, or are they?
There's an app. There's an app.
Or like with Tesla chargers, when I plug in, it just automatically knows the charge, like, it tells me how much I'm, I'm, I'm being charged on my card.
Okay.
The amount of, um, power I'm taking.
Well, you guys are the experts in this.
I don't, I just know that there's an app.
Yeah, and then if I go to some random garage to plug in, I have an app and I, you know, and they charge you for that, not to.
So if you want to come to my house?
Yeah.
And plug in?
No, we're paying for that.
This is just a public.
Correct, but it also, it depends on where you're at too, some places make it free because they want you to be there.
Spend money.
So if you're going to a casino, it's gotta be free.
True, that's true.
And that's exactly what we talked about, there are multiple, multiple ways to go about it, we can designate certain chargers, only city vehicles can use them, and the city employee has a card they swipe or.
Okay, okay.
Help them, they, or something, or it can be free to everyone, or it can be pay-as-you-go, just depends on, on the will of the council.
And what, what operates that? Is there, is there like a, you have to sign up for?
Yeah, you sign up for.
Software.
Yeah, software that you have to constantly.
Yeah, like, one of the, one of the, the people who, um, delivers that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have to explore that.
Yeah, part of the costs that are being identified by this consultant is how many vehicles does the city have to turn and work in a certain amount of time, should the state, federal, and there's actual local guidelines.
We kind of.
And then also, what are the costs of the, like, physical costs of the chargers? What's the cost of the infrastructure required to serve the chargers?
Right.
And what's the cost of software, or IT, or other maintenance for the chargers? So all of that is being included in this consultant's, uh, recommendation, but the, the item tonight is just to allow me to work with COG so that COG can go after funding so that we don't have to pay.
Yeah, and there's a difference in the voltage too, because sometimes it's like a slow trickle twelve-hour charger, and then you have the super capabilities.
So the, um, it's not finalized, but you mentioned the, um, the chargers that, if[1766.25] if you look on the map for what the consultant has produced so far, it's kind of in the dirt area between the existing police department and the existing city hall. And there are actually eight chargers scheduled for there.
Wow.
Some of which are, it's not triple chargers, but it's very low voltage. It takes a long time. It's something that you can use your city vehicle during the day because you're a Monday, you're an eight to five type of employee. And then you go and over the course of the eight hours that you're not working, the charges. And then there's another type that is a very high voltage, high capacity that will charge. It's like a Tesla charger where you go and plug it in and in half an hour, you're fully.
Like 350 kilowatts an hour.
Wow.
To 500.
Fine. So Amy and Steve, do we need to put the infrastructure in, the underground in for the charger in the park so we're not tearing the park up? What are your thoughts on that, guys? Nope, there comes in.
We checked with our designers and basically there's one location where it could come in. The pole for the electric, so you to the park, comes in from the back of the existing bathroom. So the only place we would tear up.
Oh, so you'd have to trench.
Would be across that road. So we wouldn't have to tear up the parking lot and all that stuff.
And then the old Napa building, we wouldn't install a charger until we complete that renovation, right? Move the dirt, flattening and all of that stuff.
Yeah, it's all preliminary right now, but preliminary of your work with consultant is that those, I think there are multiple chargers of that Napa building, old Napa building, but they would be a part of what that becomes in the future. So we have to decide what it's going to be, build it, and then put the chargers in.
Okay.
Do we have public comment on this one? We're going to open up public comment and we're going to close public comment and bring it back to us for any final questions on the opportunity for some electric vehicle charging stations. Any final questions? All right, looking for a motion on Resolution 24-67.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Schumante?
Rolio?
Aye.
Monkada?
Hi.
Vernon?
Hi.
Sharona?
Hi. Thank you.
Good to hear you, Phil.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right. Item F. This is the consideration of approval for Resolution 24-68, declaring property surplus and then authorizing the sale of such property to the MACT museum for $1. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The city also owns the building at 753 South Main Street, currently being used as the Angels Camp Museum and the Calaveras County Visitors Bureau, Visitor Center, I think it is. MACT Telport is Mariposa, Amador, Alpine, Calaveras, Tuolumne, Telport. MACT is building a new museum. We've all seen the activity, the construction in that area. And there's going to be another portion of that building that we haven't even seen yet on the other side. So the director of museum operations for MACT approached the director of our Angels Camp Museum and said, we are aware that you have several items that are of cultural significance to MACT. Would you be willing to donate these items to us? And so the director of the museum, of the Angels Camp Museum contacted me, and I checked into it and found that, according to the director of the Angels Camp Museum, we have plenty of items and the museum wouldn't lack by donating these items to the MACT museum. Problem is, we can't. It's city property and we can't just donate it. So the, there is an ordinance that allows for the sale of property and a process by which the city can go about selling. Normally, the city would declare item surplus. They would go out to auction and the highest bidder, it would be sold to the highest bidder. There's a caveat in that ordinance that says that the city administrator can alter that process for a specific purpose. So while we can't donate the items, I had the, I asked the MACT, the Angels Camp Museum director to produce a list for us that itemizes each item, the approximate value of each item, and a photograph of each item just to memorialize transfer of property should you agree from the city's possession to the MACT museum. The MACT museum director has assured me that the items that would be transferred to them will be on public display at that location. They're not going to be tucked away in a closet or in a corner. It's going to be a part of their new museum. It does have cultural significance. So I suggested that we sell each of those, all of those items for $1 because there has to be a transfer of money. I spoke with the MACT museum. They are happy to give us $1 for all of those items. And that is my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes. So my only question is none of the items that are listed are on loan to the museum, correct? These are all been donated and owned by the city?
All of the items that are listed in the attachment are currently property of the city. They're not on loan from some other entity to the city we own them.
Okay.
And of course, you run this by legal for the surplus and then the sale to the loan.
Dollar, $1, yes.
Finally, question?
I'm happy for this. I think this is great. I really enjoy seeing MACT's doing it. And I like having it here and this is kind of putting everything together. I think this is a great move.
Yeah, I know. I had a conversation with Martin about this a while back, and he has a lot of inventory, so it's not even on display. I think a lot of this stuff, not speaking specifically, but I think a lot of this stuff is not on display and it was donated to us when the Murphy's museum closed up.
Yes.
So he was very eager to be a neighbor.
And the other piece of that is that the Native American stuff that we still have at the museum that's non-Mewoc, we're keeping and then they're displaying it and saying, and if you want to see actual Mewoc items, artifacts, go to this museum. So we'll be able to refer people to go over to this place. So very nice.
Thank you.
I'm going to open public comment on this and I'm going to close public comment on this and bring it back for any final discussion or looking for a motion on 24-68.
I'll make this motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
Schumante?
Aye.
Rolio?
Aye.
Monkada?
Hi.
Vernon?
Hi.
Sharona?
Hi. Thank you.
Okay, Item G is approve the staff recommendation to enter into an agreement with the Accufund for the city's government accounting fund-based system software. Michelle, tell us about your experience.
I'm going project for the last few months, but we've identified that over the last year, we've been trying to see what Springbrook would be that prefers county software would be an option for the city. We invested in some training and talking with Springbrook one-on-one on enhancing or, you know, what they had available for us. And we determined that going forward, they just don't have the technology or the software. Mainly the reporting is terrible. And so it takes staff a lot of time to pull the information out. It collects the information fine, it's getting the information out. It's using advanced technologies like routing purchasers. We're doing that through a smart sheet because the system's capable of doing it, but to set it up, it's a $3,000 charge. And you just run into all these extras and we have just, nobody's happy with it. And so in April, we decided to look and see what else is out there. We had had, over the last year, some people reach, some companies reach out to us like Tyler and Central Square and then Accufund. So we put out an RFQ and started with Rose and myself doing a discovery call to see if this would be a fit with the communities. And then also take into account current issues we've had with our time sheets that we're not in compliance with certain things. We can make that better, making it electronic. So going through this process, and we narrowed it down to two because one of them was extremely expensive. It's the software that the county currently uses. And it's for a larger city. And they even were upfront with us and said, we're too big for you. But if we ever have something in the future, we can reach out to you. So we left the door open. Had demonstrations here for, with Tyler and with Accufund. So they sent out a representative. And we had a team of department heads that my staff, Rose and Steve joined. And we were able to demo the software, ask our questions, figure out, you know, is this going to be a fit? Then we came up with a scoring sheet based off of the RFQ. And unanimously, everybody had chosen Accufund. Big selling point, both softwares could meet our needs in terms of reporting and output and what it offered employee portals, you know. But the best option was Accufund because they can guarantee that we can get this project done in like six to nine months, where it was over a year. And that throws us, for Tyler, that throws us into, Springbrook will only let us pay an annual fee. So if we don't get this completed, by June 30th, July 1st, I have to pay another $42,000 to them to continue it for another year. So that was a big negative. And then also the option that Accufund opted. So both would be hosted, but with Accufund, we actually purchased the software. So there's just a one-time cost. Then they host it for us and the only ongoing charges we have are hosting and maintenance. So we pay for them to host and we pay for the maintenance and support. So what that does for us is actually saves us money in year two, three and down the road. Whereas right now, currently with Springbrook and the same thing with Tyler, we would be paying every year and then we'd be subject to increases. So the only thing would be is if we needed to do a major upgrade to Accufund, which they don't foresee any time, then we would have to pay for that or any modules we add to it. But what it gives us is a suite that we could handle all of our county needs. Cash receipts, AR invoices, general ledger, payroll. Also, it has a very robust payroll system where you basically can customize your screens. It has an HR database for Rosa contracted information. Reporting is very simple in it. And then like time sheets. So that's been a big choice. And you can have options and you can have different departments on different options. They have a physical time clock if you want, a time clock where they can either check in with a card or it can be biometric. That would be additional cost for the purchase of the time card. But what comes with this is a clocking system that could be from your phone, from a tablet. And the way they keep the security piece of making sure somebody's not clocking in from home or while they're driving in is it physically stamps your latitude and longitude from where you clocked in.
It pins you.
It pins you. So you're able to go in and say, hey, wait, this person was at Starbucks when they clocked in. Right? We would have access to that.
I mean, it's one thing if you're at Utica Park or something.
Yeah, correct. So we would be able to see. It would also track the fact that they took meal breaks and they took it at the proper time. And then the same thing over time. So meal breaks they have to take.
No, but how does it track meal breaks?
Because they have to clock out.
You have to clock out to have lunch.
So if somebody took an early lunch.
You could do that.
Yes, you could.
You could.
By the, you try to phone?
Yes.
Or tablets.
Or they have a tablet.
All of you guys have tablets, right?
And then everybody receives.
Or at your desktop too.
Majority of the employees perceive a cell phone allowance to use your phone. So you could also clock in from a computer. And then they also have time sheets that they could fill out. It imports into, everybody will have a time sheet. We would be able to allocate based on if they chose, I worked at the park or I did something on a road and it would, or I worked on water, wastewater. It could allocate that through the time sheet. So those were some things we were really excited about purchasing safely. We would be able to do requisitions instead of through a smart sheet. It would all route and flow through here based on limits.
So you could type to a work order or something.
Definitely.
And then automatically rather than you guys having to do.
Yeah. And then they even made the suggestion that you can set up all of your calendars as a piece of the requisitioning and use it to reserve a room. And people could go through and each one has different workflows and whatnot. And then like I said, the biggest piece is the reporting. That's going to save us a lot of time. For example, I just wanted to get a report where I could see comparison of different year expenses, you know, two years back, you know, and have it all on one paper. To do that now, I would have to run three separate reports and match them in Excel, which would take hours. And with this, they call it whizzywig, what you see is what you get. It looks like a report. You drag the boxes and you drop them and you say this is minus one year, minus two years. And you set your column headers. It'll cross fiscal years and pull that all in, goes out to Excel, PDF.
Everything except?
Reporting is very powerful. And then the customization of the different screens like in HR and whatnot. You can track, the fields actually do calculations. So Rose won't have to determine when they're eligible for benefits. You set the calculation in that field and when you set the employee up and you put the start date, it calculates what is happening. So just very powerful. Some of the downsides when we looked and compared the two, Tyler had a lot of bells and whistles. It was, they offered some different pieces that Accufund currently does not have. When I went back and talked to the department heads, they weren't deal breakers. One of them was a scheduling software. So police and fire could use the scheduling software. Somebody calls out, it calls them. It refills in the schedule or whatnot. From what I heard from the department heads, from the chiefs, is that that is a nice feature, but they have small amount of staff. That doesn't happen a whole lot. They keep track of it in Excel or something else. It's pretty easy to fill the calendar. That's really going to have a lot more employees. The other side was an applicant tracking, an HR piece that Tyler was offering, but these are additional costs to the number they quoted here. So that value for what you would get and the number we have, which is tall. One of the benefits of Accufund over Tyler, Tyler has purchased a bunch of software and have made it talk to itself. So it has its central general ledger and then it has purchased other companies to make it talk to the general ledger, so post journal entries each time. Where Accufund was built from a program or every piece built out from the same person. And so it's one unified system. So when you're working in like cash receipts and you're posting cash receipts, it's not creating a journal entry posting. It's live and it's talking to itself. So we liked that aspect of it. We also liked that our representative who gave us the quote would be the person who was here doing the demo, would do our implementation, and then would continue on to be our support person. So, you know, we liked that relationship.
I think it's great. I trust you're, I mean, you're the one working in this. I trust your opinion.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, it's going to be a cost savings. You know, I mean, we go from $46,000 a year right now to 15. So in a few years, it'd actually pay for itself.
Actually, like three years, it's it.
Yeah, it falls to the bottom. And so when we go to the automated meter readers, that information will directly import so we're not going to be, so there'll be some staff saving. Not, but this time savings for staff.
So currently, right now, we hand key.
You hand key all that.
Manual reading slips. So that will become automatic. You will download the report from their handheld device and it will import into Accufund.
How long has Accufund been in business?
Since 2001, I believe.
Okay. And who else, did you talk to other cities of our size that currently use Accufund?
Correct. I talked to two of, two references and they have been extremely happy. They also work with the consultant that would be our implementation to support. And we're extremely happy with.
Anybody that we know or work with?
Well, the Resource Connection is one that uses Accufund because they are nonprofit and open.
Okay.
And Steve, did Turlock use Accufund? Are you, you work familiar with it in another?
I am familiar with it. Turlock did not use it. Turlock used a combination. Tyler was one thing that Turlock used and Central Square on the police and fire side. But I think Central Square informed us right up front that their product is too robust for you'd be spending your money for things that you would never use.
They're developing something for our size, but we would have to be the guinea pigs and it wouldn't even be ready till next year and that's the word.
If you guys are willing to go through this transition, I agree with Isabel. You guys are the best experts. I appreciate your input.
Very excited.
I like the time card.
Just the payroll reporting alone, the amount, like Michelle said, you know, I'd have to run maybe like seven reports to do the state controller compensation report. have to run maybe like seven reports to do the state controller compensation report. And it takes me days to build this report. I can just do, do, do.
Well, also the budget, building the budget, I know how much frustration there was for you in transferring data and when you transfer, have to transfer data over by hand, there's errors and I know that there was a whole lot of that scary. One of the things I wanted to ask was about customer service, so all of us who are on auto pay, that continues on.
So that will be either with Tyler or Accufund part of the downsides of switching because you're not, no longer going to be on Civic Pro, which is.
Okay, so they'll all have to re-enroll.
So you'll have to have everybody re-enroll, but they offer the same thing. Accufund actually was the only one who also offered paying AR invoices online, which is nice, so it'll collect any type of receivable online, you can set it up for, same thing, one-time payment, or you can set it up for re-according.
Okay. Because I remember I had a lot of issues getting set up with Springbrook as a customer, it was really frustrating and I think I ended up coming in the office with a voided check, I'm like, I can't, I give up. I was getting into like the employee portal, it was weird going through.
Through all of it.
I should never have been in that area.
It's a little cumbersome. Did view the online pay portal and it's very simple, how they brought up a live one of somebody else who they allowed.
So then we'll just do a lot of outreach on getting everybody re-enrolled and.
That's the downside, they will have to re-enroll because that's saved and encrypted, we don't keep any credit card numbers, so that's the reason why security, everybody would be saying.
Maybe pick up a few more.
We also would have an employee portal and on that portal, they can view their check stubs so Rose doesn't have to print them or.
Yeah, that's so nice.
Yeah, it's live. They would also be able to view their W2s that are in the system, they can make requests for address, change or withholding on there, everything would flow through there, that's where they also would do their requisition.
There's an app.
Check questions, there's an app for that also.
Or employees at least, it'll be really nice to have an app with your time cards and all that.
It's available in the Google or the App, Apple App Store, so it's available with both and you can download the app for Accufund.
Awesome. We're excited. So you're ready to establish your timeline, you're going to start this tomorrow?
Yeah, we're ready. Ready to call tomorrow and say, take this on the calendar ASAP.
Right, right, right. Okay, I'm going to open public comment and seeing nobody wanting to talk about this, I'm going to close it and bring it back for us for final decision.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolia.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Fernand.
Aye.
Sharato.
Aye.
Thank you. That's going to be exciting again.
Although I do have to say, this is like the ninth software, I think, since I've been on council, it seems like technology changes.
Well, it's something we're trying to work on. Yes, we're trying to get it all into one. Consolidated into one, this, we've been on Springbrook since 2008, so it's been a long time. Yeah.
It's one thing to that sold us with Accufund is a lot of it can get integrated into Accufund.
So we're trying to downsize it to not use as many as we have it. And then they have a little Accubot, they gave us little flash drives of Accubot, but he actually, certain programs that have API interface, they'll, he, they, he goes out and talks to them and brings the data back in. So we're having our consultant, he's going to be reaching out to I work, since we use that a lot, building, planning and whatnot, to see how I could talk.
All right, item H, this is up here, resolution 24-70, Department of Justice, giving the city access to state and federal level summary criminal history information for employment. Steve.
No, it's actually, sorry, Rose. This is actually the first process in order to get us started for the process. I had to reach out to them to get the resolution that was drafted, I had to send it back to them for approval, once they approved it, then I am able to bring it to you. Once you guys approve it, then I have to send it back to them and then they send it to DOJ and then DOJ will then approve it and then starts the process for the future steps. So before you is resolution 24-70 to start the process.
So this is just to get information on?
This is just to start it.
Right, 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 but this, this whole thing, we're not, we don't fingerprint.
No, we do not.
We're just going to get information on whether or not they've been cited or arrested or.
This will allow us to start doing fingerprinting in the future.
Oh, so we're, okay, so it's not only getting the information, we're also going to be able to fingerprint.
Not in-house, we will have somebody do the fingerprinting and getting the.
So where do we send them now to get fingerprinted?
Well, they got it at county.
Sheriff's office, basically a machine, a life scan machine.
Do they have a life scan?
They have a life scan machine, just I think the CCOE has.
But we don't, we're not a.
We don't administer the fingerprinting for that, we send people out in order to get fingerprinted, we have access to get the, at the police department, we have access to get the results of those fingerprints, but it's only for police employees.
Correct.
And there's a cost, there's a cost per person that goes in there, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a lot, right? No, it's like twenty percent. Yeah, that's what I remember, like twenty-one dollars.
Yes. Yeah, it adds up.
Yeah.
There's some other, there's some rolling fees and stuff like that that you end up paying.
Yeah.
And then there's.
But it's good because it gives you updates too, like if somebody does get.
Yeah, you're getting a notification saying this person was arrested for felony offenses or.
And that's costly, the.
What's that?
No, no, no. Oh, okay.
No, somebody will be designated to receive the report.
Yes, we mean.
Yeah, somebody will be designated. But there's no intent on our part to do life scan within the city, it's always to send them.
It's normal that police and sheriff's departments do it, but we're, we don't have the ability at our police department. We don't know why we're going to put a life scan out in the garage, which is, you know, possible, but.
It's okay.
And there's no real benefit either other than that, you've got to have, SORPD does have.
And then the little sheriff's office in Jamestown does it.
Yeah, they do them like once a week or something like that, you have to schedule them ahead of time or that kind of stuff, so it's, there's manpower involved in, being involved in that. There's no benefit to it, surely.
Okay.
So does that have to be, that doesn't have to be negotiated, does it? Steve, now we're going to start fingerprinting?
This would be for future employees.
For all, so all current wouldn't.
So right now, police are the only employees that, it's a pre-employment background, basically. And so this would allow for any future employees, in addition to police, fire, city hall, water, all of our future employees to, to go to the sheriff's office, basically, get their life scan fingerprints done, we would then get a result of that and then any time that their subsequent arrest notifications would come to us.
So Deb, are you guys talking about adding this in the MOU that?
First, that's not.
For, not for existing, for.
Deb, you're muted.
For new hires?
Deb, we can't hear you.
That's because I'm muted, we're still responding, sorry about that. So I think this would be something that would be part of our procedure, so applicants are not offered by the MOU. So we can, we can go ahead and do, do something like this so that, and I think it's a good idea, we just need to be very, very careful that we comply with the civil rights department's requirements, you can't, so there's no restriction on requiring a criminal background check with exception of arrests that have not involved by convictions or things that have been sealed, which DOJ wouldn't do. And once we have that, we need to be careful that we don't use any information we have in an improper way. So if we make a decision not to hire, we have to go through a process with the applicant, the decision has to be very, very specifically tied to the job duties or what our risk would be. And, but this is not something that I would think needs to be mentioned.
Because it's prior to them being.
It's applicant.
Okay. I'm going to open public comment at this time and I'll close public comment, bring it back for final questions. Is there a goal to get all employees current involved in this or is that opening up a public comment?
It's an option if we want to go back and have all of our existing employees go through the life scan process and it would mostly be for the purpose of subsequent arrest notifications. That way there's an existing employee gets arrested, however, that would, I would think, require significant, if not meet and confer outright negotiation and written into, so it's not my intent to include current employees in this, this is for future employees.
Got you, got you, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, looking for a motion, if anybody wants to make one, verse 24-70.
So moved.
We have a motion.
I'll say.
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolia.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Fernand.
Aye.
Sharato.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item number 11, administration report, Steve.
Okay, thank you, once again. And of course, I printed the wrong one, I printed August instead of September, so that's why I'm not flying on my phone, I'm looking at my, my monthly update, so the city council monthly update, I do want to make one correction to that. I wrote on there that there is a planning commission meeting on September 5th and September 19th and there is not.
Okay.
There is only one planning commission meeting at 5:00 PM on September 12th. Wrong all the way around. I'll remember. Yeah. And I appreciate the staff that pointed that out to me, so it was necessary, so I appreciate it. The only other thing is in this month's report, I did note on the front page, major projects, including Utica Park with an estimated completion date of April of 2025. The current CIP project, because we've been talking about that lately, I thought that it would be important for you guys just to have it right on the front, this is the current thing that we're working on and the estimated completion date, so currently we're working on Booster Way, we're expected to get that complete probably sooner than, but right now the target date is September 20th. And then the very next project after that, next CIP project will be the Mark Twain Road Looping Pipes with the engineering plans from Dave Richards due on October 1st. So you can see that we're involved in a CIP project right now, as soon as that one gets done, within the next 10 days of that being done, the plan for the very next project is going to be given to us. On the next page, page two, capital improvement projects, I listed all of the one-year capital improvement projects along with the estimated dates that we're going to start it, the estimated costs set up, so you can see how we're spending our CIP reserve, CIP monies, who's in charge of it, whether it's a water project or a wastewater project.
What's this, Kepursting Vallesigo Road?
So that is, that is a huge project, so it, it continues what is begun on Booster Way and it kind of follows that, follows the creek, I think, down Vallesigo to the next project, which would be East Rogers Drive. So it's kind of a one, two, three, starting with Boosters, Vallesigo's next.
So let me ask you, are we, I appreciate you establishing due dates for our engineer, are there any penalties if they don't produce the plans by that date?
No, other than my expression of dissatisfaction and the possibility of alternate experts being used in the future. We have a contract with Dewberry, but I can put it bluntly, we don't have to continue with Dewberry, if they establish deadlines and they don't meet those deadlines, there might be a time to consider other options, so.
Are these final plans coming in or are these like a draft set of plans coming in?
These are draft.
So it's like a 90% completion?
It is, yes.
Okay.
But there's not like a monetary penalty, it was an agreement that Dave or Chris made with me that set it by these dates, I will have something in hand to look at.
Okay.
It's nothing binding, there's no penalty for not doing it, other than it will be reported to you if these deadlines aren't met and that you do with it as much as what you think is appropriate.
Okay.
Do the final plans come to council for approval and then they go out for solicitation or what is the process? Let's just say the Mark Twain.
Starting the CIP.
Yeah, we've already approved.
Yeah, so the funding's already approved for it. So the process should be, my understanding in talking with Chris and Dave, is that Dave will draft the plans, get them to me by this date, Chris will look them over, make sure that whatever his involvement in it would be, his staff's involvement that they're good with, is then put out for bid, the bid will probably come back to you.
For a word?
Yes.
I guess my confusion is how do we already have a cost estimate without a set of plans? I understand that we have a budget established as a, as a throw a dart and make a big guess, but I don't understand how that cost estimate could be still.
So the cost estimate is what you have budgeted for that project currently in, in this year's budget.
Yeah.
So that's where I pulled that from. It may cost more, it may cost less.
When the plans are completed.
But that's what's currently budgeted.
Okay.
Right down to those projects. The only other thing I would point out on the report is in the engineering section on page four.
You're going to provide this to us digitally, right?
Is it not?
No, it's, it's.
I mean.
What do you mean?
No, like he, like that one.
Oh, do you want to print it also?
No, I email it to us.
Oh, just email it separately, not in the documents?
Okay, yeah, we can print it.
Yeah. No, it's, it's fine, I, it's, I'm.
Just because Pickled Porch was a topic today, the parking lot next to Pickled Porch, the engineer is, I think it was a suggestion at one of the council meetings, the engineer errant is developing plans that would, right now there are two entrances to that one piece of land that we bought, do we need both of those entrances? If somebody parks near one of them, it blocks people coming out, so the engineer is engineering that in a way that makes it a little more usable, so those plans are in the process. Okay, that's all I have on this report, I do have a couple of other things, unless there are any questions about my printed report, please. Okay, so a couple of other things, planning commission, we were talking about how I made a mistake on that. Wayfinding and monument ribbon cutting, I received an email from the county identifying October 22nd as a ribbon cutting date. And the county has asked, does anybody from the city want to, this will be after our Board of Supervisors meeting on October 22nd, does anybody from the city want to come to this ribbon cutting for the wayfinding and monument project and represent the city in the ribbon cutting and possibly say a couple of words? So I thought I would bring it here, if somebody on the council wants to represent the city and do that, if not, I will go and represent the city and do that, but I thought I'd bring it here first.
I can't, I can't do this one.
Yeah.
I'm, I, I'm, I'm involved in the project at the county, so I have that.
Do we know what time?
I think.
It's right after the, it's like lunchtime.
Lunchtime. I think, I think I'm available too.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm available.
So this is at the government center then, around at 12?
I have a meeting, David, I'll try and make it, I just don't know what time.
And I think I see the base, the base of the Angels Camp one is in the, you know, the.
Yeah, there's different, Comper, they're over this far in town.
So they're, they're, they're in process, so, okay. Any normalization date maybe, or is it by the 22nd of October?
Angels Camp will be, they'll start working more on the ladder part this week and then they're going to be completed in two weeks, right?
Comper's already got metal.
The little frogs go up, colors.
All right.
Maybe not the way, but the monument.
The monument, yeah, so there's wayfinding signs and then there's the big monument.
That's right, there's a monument sign is what I was thinking of.
All right, the next item that I have is groundbreaking for the Habitat project is September 23rd and there will be a ceremony, I'm told, so just wanted to put that out there for your information. I don't know the.
It is on Sunday.
For sure.
Nine, nine.
Nine AM.
And it's going to be by Capella, day of the town?
At the site.
Where, where?
At the site.
At the site, okay.
So I don't know if formal invitations will go out or not, but I was advised the groundbreaking So I don't know if formal invitations will go out or not, but I was advised the groundbreaking is September twenty-third, so I'm not sure where I left. We talked about Booster Way being completed mid-September, I met with the superintendent and the principal and some maintenance folks at Mark Twain School, along with the chief, and city engineer, and. Chris. Chris, so all of us met and talked about how's it going for school opening, and the new traffic patterns, and the signs, and the, and the painting on the roads, so. I just wanted to report that that meeting happened, and we're coming up with some plans to make the situation out there a little more permanent. And make sure signs are posted appropriately so that law enforcement can take action, because the way they are right now, we're not formally taking action, we're warning people when it's appropriate, but we're not issuing citations, because some of the signs need a little more, we need to have a little adjustment to the signs before we're actually confident to start citing people.
You're talking about stop signs, the four and stop?
The, the no parking, the no stopping signs, the stop signs were good to go.
Okay.
Superintendent's very happy with the work that Chris's crew did with repainting the crosswalks and getting the signs in place before school started, the stop signs. They repainted another crosswalk on San Joaquin, and actually made it extend all the way to the curb, where it didn't extend to the curb before, so they're very happy with the work of Chris and his crew. I think the last thing that I have is the speed tables, so when I first got here, I heard about a, I was informed by somebody, maybe Chris, about a, a project of speed tables. And that the speed table project was in partnership with the county, and the county was going to do something, and we were going to kind of piggyback on their effort and use the same contractor to install these speed tables, I think we identified a test location around town, or a certain location, to possibly extend to other locations around town. I've since been told that whatever the county was going to do with their speed tables, they're now not willing to do, or their contractor fell through, or whatever price that they thought they can get it for, they can't get it for, for whatever reason, my understanding is the county is out, so I bring it to you. Do we still want to move forward with speed tables if the county is out, or do you want me to bring this back to you for formal action?
So that was one of my questions, we, Chris reported or somehow that they were going to resurface Gardner Lane, and so that's why the speed tables were put on hold, and they were going to resurface it in September because the weather was cooler, or something like that, I hope all of you remember that conversation.
S B one project that we applied.
Right.
For and received the funds to do a crack ceiling.
Crack ceiling.
And chip ceiling.
So is that still in the works?
That's still in the works.
Because, you know, I, as one member of this council, still would like to see speed tables on Gardner Lane. But we can't do it until after they crack seal it.
Okay.
I mean, I guess I would need to know what kind of costs turn around that, and, yeah, I mean, I, maybe, maybe a more formal presentation of.
Okay, I think it was just an idea, I don't think there's any numbers pitched, it was like, maybe we could piggyback on it, and if you wanted to pick a spot, Gardner Lane would be.
We could do an emotion, I'm excuse you.
Yeah.
Right.
We did move forward, and I recused myself, and I've had a conversation with Chris since, and I've given him two options, but that was like ten months ago, a month and a half ago. Yeah, I, I'm bad with time, but I know, it was every bit of a month ago, so there's actually also some temporary speed tables that you can do, they're like a bolt-on. They're on Pope Street in San Andreas, if you're driving back by the elementary school, and I told Chris that those are very inexpensive, or they were, in my opinion, and that could not interfere, I, my suggestion would be, it might not interfere with the microsurface, because you do that, get it done when the weather's appropriate, and then you bolt those. And the nice thing about that is, that is the definition of the pilot program, to see what city and what we think about your test area for those speed tables, so. I actually, I thought I gave him a contact for those, to order some, but I don't know where.
Can I ask, I don't remember if we did, I'm sure we did, but did we survey or reach out to the neighborhood? To give any sort of response?
No, we didn't.
That should live on Gardner, that are going to be affected by this.
You know, I.
I'm sure they'll be in support of it, but I think, just a suggestion, is that we may want to reach out to the people that will be affected that are living on that street.
I think that the five of us have had enough conversations with people, I mean, I haven't talked to every person on.
I didn't say, if somebody's living there and they have a complaint, they said, well, no, the city ever came and mentioned anything to us, you know, we talk about public notification, I've heard from this council a lot of times about, we need to make sure that we're reaching out to people, making sure they're aware of things that are going on.
Right.
And I know that we've talked about it here, and I, I think it's a good idea, but I just hate to see us go down that road again, where somebody's unhappy because no one from the city ever reached out, and wanted to know that this was happening.
I don't, I don't have any problem with public outreach, Scott, I'd have a problem if a kid got killed, because people drive way too fast down Gardner Lane, and there's no way to control it. You know, and, and I've, I've heard, you know, more than one person say, you know, I'm going to start throwing something at these cars, because they don't slow down.
Yeah, and there's input from the people that live there, but I think if I could support that, that's all I'm saying is. I don't want to do something without.
I agree with what Scott says, I think you need to do that, we need to.
Right, we'll do.
Let her out or something.
That could be, that could be in any back road in Angels Camp, people are.
Right, but I, but I, I don't think we need them anywhere, Gardner Lane is a connecting road, and I don't know how many more connecting roads we have.
If any place in the city needs it, that would be the road that would be suggested, I don't think there's another one that I would suggest.
Right. But, and I, I, I agree with public outreach, but you're not going to have everybody in favor of that.
At least I know it's coming. I mean, we talked about Utica Park and outreach there a number of times.
I'm okay with the outreach, I worry about the safety of kids on that road, I do, you know, it's close to the high school, and it's just, it's a concern, and you live.
I live there, I see it, I, I've thrown things at cars, I'm that girl.
I think it's.
It is horrible, and there's kids riding bikes, and it's not safe.
I don't think we're going to.
I don't, I don't necessarily, it doesn't, and you're not going to have a hundred percent, and you're not going to reach the rent residence, because they're a renter, and they're, you're getting to the property owner, but here and there, we do have to do outreach to let them know of the work that's going to be done, and the intent, and I think it's going to be very well.
And if the county, if the county's out, I don't even know if they're reporting.
Well, but.
Either, I don't, I don't know what the alternatives, I don't know.
Was there a motion for money involved that night?
I thought we, I thought.
Just for the project, the S B one project, which was the crack ceiling.
Yeah, but before that, we had a, we, we took the action.
Another meeting at a different time.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Yeah, I don't remember the finances of it, I know the direction the county was going on the financial side, and that fit this budget.
Right.
According to Rebecca, you know, back at that time, but then the county's project went a different direction, and now.
Right, so I, I don't know if it was piggybacked on, you know, I just don't, that's my only thing, is the funding aspect.
You have gas tax, William, you have about a hundred and ninety thousand, that's not your limit for anything right now, so.
It's possible, but I, yeah, need some numbers on it, but I. Yeah, I didn't have the history of it, so when I heard that the county was, we were working, working in conjunction or cooperation with the county, and now that the county's not doing it, I just wanted to see if there's still interest, sounds like there is, so I got an answer there.
And then maybe contact Steve, or, I mean, just Steve, Chris, and, you know, I think the bolt-oner is the best way to go for right now, too, to bolt them down, and they're not permanent, and.
And then if the pilot program is not successful, for whatever reason, then you pull them out.
Right.
And Mike, just, for example, on those, yeah, just consider for bolt-on, there's a noise factor.
There is.
There's a noisier factor.
Like I said, drive, drive Pope Street, I drove it again the other day, they've been out for about a year and a half, and I tried to roll my window down, because I know that's the number one complaint about, and especially in a residential area. I don't think they're any, I mean, no noisier than something jiggling around on the back of your truck, but you're right, that is the number one complaint about the bolt-ons, is because they start to rattle or loosen.
You know, over a year, or something like that, you know, without maintenance, they're probably going to loosen up, and they're going to rattle.
Yeah, they're not a forever fix.
At least come back with.
Five minutes later, yeah.
You know, Phoenix Lake Road in Twalney County has, and I, I, I think it's, it's pretty cool, it's the same thing I feel about our crosswalks. They have a solar powered kind of, what do you call it, speed thing or whatever, the speed limit's forty, and it tells you you're going over the speed limit?
Or that three of them waiting to be installed.
Oh, we do, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
They were bought last, this year, or they're just waiting to be installed.
I mean, I, you know, some kind of visual reminder about what it is. But maybe, Steve, when we send out the notification that we're going to do resurfacing, we can also say that, you know, there are future plans for speed tables.
Very good, thank you. I just signed the agreement today for the, for the radar feedback signs, right, watch safety.
I don't know, that's the A L P R for four and forty-nine, we have the boxes with the speed feedback signs, the ones solar powered, they're just solar powered ones that just give you a speed.
That's right, we're waiting on encroachment permits, because a couple of them are going on, on forty-nine.
I think we're waiting on, I think you got it.
So Steve, looking at the update that you provided, I don't see, the microsurface project is not called out as a capital improvement project, the, the Gardner Lane microsurface.
Yeah, that's not in the current one-year C I P plan, the only things in the current one-year C I P plan are on page two.
So it's not.
It's approved as a project, that's the S B one, and it was in the budget under a supply and construction.
I don't think it's in the cabinet.
No, no, gotcha.
Yeah.
Because it's not, yeah, it's paid for a hundred percent.
That's C E one.
Actually, going back to the speed tables really quickly, it was a discussion in direction that it looks like we talked about a budget recommendation for the fiscal year, and it's asked was it anywhere between six to eight thousand, and I was in range, per speed table, just, but I was just throwing that all around, it was just a discussion in direction, it wasn't a.
In May, thank you.
Yep, the date's May seventh, twenty-two.
Perfect words. Ten, done, forgot, thank you.
Okay, moving on, your job of administration, moving on to council report, Mike?
Yes.
Not, oh. Utica, Missa?
Where is it? Utica in September, yeah. Listen up, huh, yep. Is that, I don't have anything, I'll be at club tomorrow, and then I'll go before next weekend, I'll be at club tomorrow, I do, you want me to do the Utica? Yeah, we had Utica and FERC. Yep. Unfortunately, our legal counsel passed away, kind of, I guess, unexpectedly from FERC, he was the best in the nation, and so it's a big loss for a lot of communities, obviously, for experience, so it leaves us looking at new legal counsel, and so Joel went and talked to the legal firm he was with, and to other legal firms that are highly recommended by Stan, Stantec, and so we are looking at moving Cost Layer Legal to.
And this was our, not our regular legal, our monthly legal, it was the, he was the FERC exemption specialist, so he, but we have, we have.
We have some good, we have some good options, more expensive options, too, but we thought he was accessible. But anyway, I mean, you know, you, you have to pay sometimes to have the best representation, and something like this, it's kind of a.
Worst.
The other thing is that we're marching towards the FERC exemption application, and that's going to be submitted in the first quarter, like first beginning of the year, twenty-two, or five. So that's where we're looking, and so all these studies have been happening that were not.
Gathering data.
Gathering data.
Fish studies and.
Frog, yellow-legged frog, and all that good stuff, so, so that's really the, the bulk of what that meeting was, yeah.
And the FERC committee meets periodically outside of the Utica meetings to really try to figure out if there's more efficient ways to accomplish the studies, because they're all being required from Fish and Wildlife, and Army Corps, and all that, so trying to get those studies done.
Economically and like.
Efficiently.
Efficiently, and maybe we don't go with Stantec with all of the.
Stantec will inevitably help us prepare the package, put the bow on it, and send it off, but a fish study could be maybe done by somebody else that they could incorporate, so they, they determined the study, they've written the plan, and that we've all signed up for, but now we're kind of the proof of the pudding, where we're really going to get the studies done, and that's that's sooner than later, yeah, like September, October, so.
Does Stantec have final say over the report?
No, I think it's like, it's industry standard, so they'll say, we need like a stream flow, blah, 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 and you need to capture it, morning, noon, and night, or whatever, the study, the plans calls out what study needs to be done, and the type of study, like electric shocking of this and that, and, oh, it's really interesting.
And they're not, yeah, they're not offended if we go, because they know we're on a budget.
And they're going to propose it, they're not, they're, they're proposing, it's like, hey, you guys need to go have this study done by somebody else, we get it. Yeah, they definitely say they're not the cheapest, yeah, but we're going to consider that for, for moving forward with all the college studies, and what else have we did? It just.
That was kind of, yeah, that's good of it, everything else goes. Husky, dated, yeah.
Husky D. So move ahead on English press. No more council report, but let's talk calendar, Rose.
I just realized I didn't add it into the faculty list. Up there is the September calendar.
Yeah.
Is there anything that you see that I need to add? I'll add the groundbreaking for the twenty-third for Habitat.
Nope.
No?
Okay.
And then October, I have October's up here. There's a holiday in October.
On the fourteen.
And I was gonna add.
One bit.
Yeah, yeah, and then I'll add the ribbon cutting on the twenty-second for this one.
Okay.
Also, Saturday, September fourteenth, Matt is having a friend raising event, looks like they're giving museum hard hat chores for twenty-five dollars for a family, or twenty dollars for a single person. But they said, I just got the updated email, or another invite warrant, so.
September?
September.
I will double check with.
Yes, but I will check on, but I just would like to support them and.
Are they doing a ribbon cutting?
Um, I don't think it's a ribbon cutting, it's like.
It's a friend raising, it's a friend raising.
They were going to walk people through the construction, and there was some concern, so.
Oh, no, because it's.
Yeah, it's not completely available, so. What time was that again?
Um, two to six.
Two to six, I'll find out to general what you guys know.
It's like an open house, kind of clean.
Fun raising, yeah. Okay.
Okay, moving on to future agenda items.
Future agenda items, I have, I wanted to bring the fire job descriptions to you this meeting, but it will be next meeting, so that's your, that's your second September meeting, an update to the fire job descriptions. I've reached out to three different human resources consultants to have them assist us where we need assistance, look at our processes, and so kind of narrowing in on which one looks like would be the best fit for us, so that will be a future council item that I will bring to you. And then we are starting our preparations for the C I P presentation that was requested at a special meeting last week, and that's, I think, all good, or down. Rosie, have you any more?
No, I can't, I'll be at nine. I was thinking earlier, too, no.
Do any council members have any future agenda items?
So at some point, we'll talk about master planning the city, just as a discussion item, you know, how we're going to use district facilities, city facilities.
So one of my projects is a space needs assessment?
I think that's the same. That's what.
Yeah, same thing, yeah.
And there are, so I've reached out to multiple companies that do that type of work.
Do you think we should just have an informal discussion about what we think first about the city?
You, would you like a special meeting, or just a regular meeting?
I, yeah, you guys decide, I just, I mean, it would be, it would be good just to talk about what do we believe the future for the city looks like, is fire and police going to be housed together, are we going to sell the old, you know?
City hall.
City hall, you know, just, you know, those kinds of conversations, that might create a framework when you guys, when you go out for a consultant.
I have one item.
Wasn't there talk, I'm sorry, I piggybacked on that, wasn't there talk about Aspen Street?
Yes.
Having started or.
They have done, I think, that one before, and Rebecca was going to look into using them again.
To update it.
To update it.
So that might be.
Yeah, I've seen one that was done, that it was.
Long event.
Yeah, I want to say like fifteen-ish years ago.
Oh, okay, I thought it was more recent than that.
Not old, but it had outdated information.
We probably own all state.
But it was Aspen. But it was Aspen.
Yeah.
It just might be.
Yeah, that, I mean, just people, like, we're, um, one of my things too on the backs of this is that the roof at City Hall, the old City Hall looked terrible. And I don't know if anybody's gone in there recently or, I'm just nervous about.
Winter?
Preserving that building and not letting it just completely deteriorate. And so I was driving by it today and I noticed the roof looked kind of bad.
Did we bring out?
So I don't know if that's been looked at.
No.
I don't think we did.
I don't think so.
Because we had $200,000 before, previously, but we did it bare bones, but I mean, we were going to. Wish, we had a wish list to add.
It was not to move City Hall there and redo that whole thing, but that's, that's a full redo.
Right, I mean, I think that's part of the, the needs assessment too, like, should we be renting that building? Should we be selling that building? It's just sitting there and it looks like an ice art, it's just, look, it's worse and worse.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people contact me about it.
I've had it, yeah, like, all the plants are dead on front and, but it, just to preserve the building so that it's worth something at some point, like if we sell it or rent it, we have to make sure that the bones are kept healthy.
I agree.
Maybe see if I cut wall.
I agree. So that's it for future agenda items?
Done.
All right, seeing then, looking for adjournment?
So we'll.
Done.